Thank you very much. I rest on already established protocol and hope that you bear with me. From the documentary presented, I think it is clear that the federal government has done a lot in the past four years. And for anyone to come on board, Mount Erosrum, and then say that government is doing nothing and the power sector is just a grand deception and blowing hot air. I think it is a shame that people who should know better can go about trying to deceive the country that the power sector has not been doing what it ought to do. The federal government has done a lot. And from all that you have seen within the past four years, this country has seen a very good growth in the generation of power, transmission of power, and distribution of power. Mr. President inherited about 2,800 megawatts of power on a daily basis. Today, we are exceeding 4,500 megawatts. Facts do not lie. I mean, facts are facts. We have scientific data to validate what we are saying. And I would like to go through my presentation. It is a PowerPoint presentation. And after that, we will now take questions. I would like to begin by sharing with you where we are coming from and what we would like to cover, the approach of the government, achievements so far attained, gas challenges and remedies, achievements in the reform process, capacity building, and then outlook for the future. Next, generally for the power sector, you can see displayed is a most capital-intensive sector. When you talk about just one megawatt of power, what is the least cost to get one megawatt out there? It is about 1.5 million US dollars. At the rate of naira to dollar exchange, you're talking of somewhere very close to 300 million naira to get one megawatt. Nigerian needs about 350 billion US dollars to continue to grow power up to 2030. Multiply that by over 185 and you see what you will end up, how many trillion naira you will end up having. Actually, this goes even beyond trillions of naira. We are here talking quadrillion of naira. For those of you who don't know that after trillion, we go to quadrillion. And I don't think anybody had thought about a budget in quadrillions in Nigeria. But that's what we need. It is a very expensive sector. And it takes long to deliver. For gas projects, just gas. If they tell you we found a gas field, to develop that gas field and begin to produce gas from it would take about 36 months. Sometimes five years, sometimes seven years. These things don't come by wishful thinking. They come by planning, doggedness, determination to make sure that what is planned is realized. For IPP projects, that is independent power projects, some people think once you conceive, I'm going to build a 1,000-megawatt power plant by the time you say Jack Robinson is there. It is not true. Look at our flagship IPP, Azura. It's been in the making for the past three years plus. And the ground was just broken two months ago. In other words, by the time Azura comes on stream, from the time it was conceived and embarked upon, you would have spent a minimum of five years. These things are not just building even skyscrapers. They take much longer than that. Now, when you're talking about transmission projects, some people think, well, if your transmission substation blows up and you want to change it, like when Abu blew up. Some of us lived in areas. I live in Asokoro. Before that time, I was getting 22 and my neighbors were getting 22 to 23 hours of electricity supply on a daily basis. Now, lightning struck and shattered that transmission substation. And we have to do, we had to do a mix shift by using old antiquated systems just to make sure that the people, we are not totally plunged into darkness for a very long time. Now, how long does it take to replace such or to even build a new one? You have to do your design concept or you start from conception. You do the design and then you do the feasibility studies. And then you do the procurement. By the time you finish from design to procurement, over a year has passed. Many of those things you cannot pick off the shelf. You have another 12 to 18 months for them to be manufactured and then shipped home and then installed and then tested and commissioned before they can be put to use. These things don't happen just overnight. And then, of course, you know how long it takes to now do all the three at a time. Next, we have, just to show you what government is doing, interventions on three fronts here are shown. One is improvement of service delivery using all kinds of mechanisms to make sure that that is done. The other one is perfection of the reform of the Nigerian power sector. And then, of course, employment and human capacity building and upgrading. These are very crucial. Because we inherited a power sector that was totally dilapidated, not only with regard to physical and material infrastructure, but also by the fact that we had an ailing and aging technical and professional manpower. That's what this government inherited. But thankfully, President Jonathan has done a lot. And in the course of the presentation, I will mention some of this. Next slide deals with the service delivery improvements along the entire electricity value chain. Some of these you've already seen in the presentation. I will not belabor the point, but I want to just harp on some of the facts. With regard to gas provision, development, and then supply to the power sector, this government inherited 380 million scuff. Today, this government is delivering over 1 billion scuffs of gas. If that is not development, if that is not an improvement, as Pia said earlier, geometrical, not just arithmetic, geometrical improvement in the capacity to deliver gas more than doubling in four years. That is something President Goodluck Jonathan has done. This government has also completed construction of 450 kilometers of gas pipeline. That doesn't even include the ones recently completed in the last couple of days, which I'm not in a hurry to tell the Vandals so that they won't go and start attacking them before they are even commissioned. Now, think of all the power plants being now connected. When we think about what the government of President Goodluck, Ebeli Jonathan, has done, remember that when the 10 NIPP projects were conceived, wonderful idea, great thought, great minds came together and said Nigeria needed this. But something was missing. There was no concomitant development or building of infrastructure to make sure that there was gas to fire the turbines. It was just what happened. So, these power plants were being built and all of a sudden it was discovered there is no gas anywhere, no gas infrastructure. This government has doggedly walked at that. And as I tell you today, we now have a situation where virtually all of these power plants have gas infrastructure connected to them. It's not an easy thing for a government to do in one time. But that's what this government has done. So, the domestic gas sector reforms are being implemented. And hopefully, with the incentivization of gas producers, we will get more gas. Now, look at generation. By 2010, well, the functional capacity to deliver, the healthy capacity to deliver was 3,850. I say healthy because some of the capacities were moribund. In fact, one of our great owners of the Jenko's, I think he just left a few minutes ago, he had another program, Erwin Power Station. When people complain about privatization, if it hadn't been for privatization, the sixth Erwin power turbine that has been moribund, destroyed since 2005 would have still remained destroyed today. But by dint of hard work, massive investment, believe it or not, within one year, that sixth turbine had been fixed and had been tested and it would add 220 megawatts to Erwin Power Station. There's 220 more megawatts to Nigerian grid. And only privatization would have made that possible. Because at the end of the day, if it had been federal government running it, they would say, why are you talking of Erwin? What of the others? We haven't fixed them. Maybe they're dead or out there. But with the private people, they know they have to wake up. Same thing is happening at Ujeli. Ujeli inherited less than 200 megawatts functionally. They've over-doubled that, going to tripling that at this moment I speak to you. So privatization, as some people see and some people say, is the best thing that has happened to this country. Many other presidents before Goodluck Jonathan looked at it with what the psychologists would call avoidance, avoidance mechanism. Some came and looked at it with avoidance, approach mechanism. President Jonathan said, I will use approach, approach mechanism. And at the end of the day, he went through the privatization exercise, a very courageous and bold venture. And today, we can look back and say, yes, that was a great thing to do. So, we look at all these NIPP power plants that were shown during the presentation. So I don't need to go through that again. The same with transmission. You can see all the transmission, all the transmission work that has been done. In fact, these were just a few that were mentioned. We have a document for those who are interested to see how much more we have done in transmission. Then with regard, remember, for instance, for transmission, by 2010, we had the transmission capacity of 3,200 megawatts. Today, it has almost doubled to 5,500 megawatts. And we have so many lines that have been built. And transmission is now going from the regular radial that Nigeria has been used to, with even a whole state not being part of the national grid to a place where we are having a national grid. You go to distribution. You see by 2010, we have functionally 3,658 megawatts capacity. Today, that has more than doubled to over 9,000 megawatts capacity. One administration, one administration. And as you look at all this, you ask yourself, hasn't this government done so much? Hasn't this government done so much? The next slide tells us why we have a lot of difficulty showing exactly. I can only point to the one I can see here. Okay, you can even see this one. I have an imagery here for you to look at. I use a bicycle wheel as an illustration. Let us assume that, no, go back please. Did we lose a slide? Okay, the one before that, before that, please, before that. The one before this one, okay. Think of power generation this way. In other words, if this bicycle wheel is the whole of Nigeria that needs power and these spokes that you see, the straight lines that go to the edge of the wheel are the transmission and distribution outlet taking power to the people, there are of course millions of them. And power, where we are today is where you see this wheel. Let us assume, now that we have 4,500 megawatts and we are here, let us assume you add another 1,000 or 1,500 megawatts. You can only increase it by a finite measure to this dotted line. Because by the time it goes through all these spokes to deliver to all of Nigeria, most people will be telling, all these megawatts, we're not seeing much of it. It's like a man or a mother who has one child versus one who has 10 children. And you make only one cup of herba. For one cup of herba for a child, that would be belfooling, isn't that? But for 10 children, they didn't go belfool at all. That's exactly what it is. By the time it does place that 1,500 additional megawatt, you will not even feel it very much. In addition to that, the only way to make people feel it is concentrate. Every new megawatt, we will concentrate on some places. But that's not the way the president thinks about these things. He wants Nigerians to be equitably served. In addition to that, he hopes you, we are creating more needs in the rural areas. REAMD is here. As we build more rural communities connecting them to power, we now even increase the number of spokes in this wheel. So you still have to feed all of this. So at the end of the day, unless you have a monumental increase, doubling, tripling, quadrupling, you will not be able to saturate the entire wheel. I just felt it was important to point this out to you so that you will see why some people are saying, hey, we're not seeing so much improvement. But if you had 10 hours and you're getting 12 hours, it is improvement. If you had 14 and you're getting 18, it is improvement. If you had 18 and you're getting 22, it is definitely improvement. But it takes time for everybody everywhere to feel this. That's why some people keep saying, well, we get power and then maybe they leave home. They don't know how long power has been. It is only when they are home, maybe at night, maybe at the time that load shedding is being done, that they now say, oh, we have only a few hours of power at night. So that's the reason that it is not easy to fully saturate the country and give a 24/7 power supply to the entire country. Let's go to the next slide, please. This is the one that shows what the Vandals are doing to us. And it is really very painful. If you look at this plot, you will see spikes. Spikes going up, showing where we were and so on before the Vandals strike. I can't say this clearly from here, but I will just try to tell you what happened. If you read this, you will notice that maybe anytime we come to over 4,000 megawatts, anytime we hit 4,000 megawatts, you'll notice that the Vandals strike. And when we hit it, they strike. Then we went up again and they saw that and interfered with some. And you see, we lost some power supply. But we tried to maintain it to 4,000 for a while. And because apparently we are not comfortable with that, they struck again and brought us down to less than 3,300. And then there was even a time we came down because of massive vandalism of these pipelines to less than 2,500 for a couple of days. Then we ramped it up, ramped it up all the way, went over 3,000, came up to 4,000 and so on, and they struck again. And then struck again and pushed it all the way down. You go up again, once you hit that 4,000, you see them strike. You move up again and we tried to sustain this no matter what. And for quite some time, almost a month, we sustained about 4,000. And when they finally hit, they shut us down to 3,500 and below and so on and so forth. By December, most of you know that we are above 4,300 until they struck again. We hit 4,500 and even beyond. But this is the reason we keep crying vandalism, vandalism, vandalism. Why do people hate their own country? Who is doing these things? There are two types. There are people who do it because they want to steal oil. So, when they now attack the oil pipelines because of associated gas that goes and because of the fact that condensates continue to build up and is evacuated, once the condensed tanks are full, the gas pipelines will have to be shut down. Otherwise, there will be a catastrophic disruption of the flow of oil. Those are those that we call oil thieves. But most of those that do these things are not oil thieves. They do it on direct gas pipelines. They go underwater in terrain that you and I will not have the guts to go. And they bust these gas pipelines. Sometimes they do it in multiple places so that by the time you fix this one, thinking you're done, others are there because you never find the pressure enough. So you know there are more, like the one they did in 2013 that took almost seven months, seven to eight months to fix. More than two dozen spokes. What were they doing? They can't use the gas. That's why we keep crying out loud. Let the Vandals spare this country. And that's why we now reached an agreement with the army, with the navy, with National Security Adviser's Office coordinating this and the Nigerian Civil Defense Corps, which has continued to play a massive role in protection of this infrastructure. But the problem is, there are long interrains that are difficult to reach where you and I would ordinarily not want to go or even venture into. But these people are so determined that they want to show Nigeria that we cannot deliver enough power. It has come to a place where if we know there is a milestone to be achieved because there is a lot of gas now available, we can't even announce it. Because once we announce it, they preempt us. Hopefully, with what Mr. President is doing now, we are going to be able to have much better security for the oil and gas pipelines. And I do believe that by the grace of God, after the elections, maybe the saboteurs will see that there is no need to continue until several years to come. But I do hope that we all, wherever we are, we continue to pass the message to our countrymen and women, please secure your infrastructure. The only good thing coming out of it is that it has massively moved us to begin to deploy a much better and robust energy mix for the country. And we're all working hard, just like they say necessity is the mother of all invention. That has now driven us to work very hard to make sure that Nigeria will never be held hostage by Vandals in the future. But it's going to take time to develop the coal plants. It's going to take time to develop the solar farms, wind farms. It's going to take more time to develop even the hydro, more hydros that are coming upstream. The next slide shows more of what government is doing with regard to provision of gas for the power sector. And you can see that all over the place, not only is gas being processed, but the infrastructure is being built to make sure that the gas is delivered and the gas is taken to other parts of the country. There is a gas master plan for Nigeria. And by the grace of God, following that gas master plan, gas will be available to even the furthest part of the country in no distant future. But it takes a lot of money to do that. That's why some of it will be by PPP, others may end up being by concessioning. The next slide just shows a history of the handover, privatization, and handover. And then the next one deals with capacity building in the power sector. I think it is important for us to know that unless we have a robust capacity to deliver within the sector, especially technical capacity at the level of artisans, technicians, technologists, and of course, engineering capacity, there is no way we will be able to sustain whatever power we deliver to our people. For 16 years, NEPA and PSCN did not hire any engineer. How can a country that is one of the best at making babies and growing population have a demographic change, shift, massive change and shift in demographics, rural, urban shift all the time? How can it have a power sector for 16 years? You don't employ engineers and technologies. That sector was moribund when President Jonathan inherited it. But he now gave us the leeway to employ. the leeway to employ within the past year and a half over 1,000 engineers. Only Jonathan could have done it. Over 1,000 engineers with many more coming. I believe even by the end of this year, there will be permission for more thousands so that this infrastructure that is being developed will be manned by our own sons and daughters. We don't want to, you know, encounter the frustration and the nightmare that the oil sector had before the local content law was passed. We don't want that. That's why we want to go ahead, develop this. That's why NAPTIN is there, National Power Training Institute. But National Power Training Institute builds mostly engineers, develops them. I'm an engineer by profession. And I do know from our own engineering curriculum that at the time a Nigerian engineer graduates, he has a lot to learn. That's why they start in some international global companies as pupil engineers, where they undergo pupillage and tutelage in order to firm up as real, practical, functional engineers. I also know that we need to change our curriculum. Incidentally, in 2004, when I was Vice Chancellor of University of Nigeria, Mtsuka, I and Professor Ibida Bube, who was then Vice Chancellor of University of Lagos, we are made as school chairs for changing of the engineering curriculum in all the Nigerian universities. It took years to implement, but the problem with implementation now is where are the laboratories? Where are the workshops? We need to be for where these young people are trained. So that's why NAPTIN is there. You get your degree, Bachelor of Engineering, Bachelor of Science in Engineering, H and D Engineering, and then NAPTIN gives you one full year of training. So that once you go out there in the field, your employer starts enjoying every cobble he or she pays you because you are performing. But we now looked at it and say, hey, for every engineer, you need technicians. You need artisans. You need other skilled laborers, not at that level, working to make sure that things are going. So we conceived with the approval of Mr. President, the Nigerian, the National Power Sector Apprenticeship Scheme, NAPSA. Where we don't want just people coming from one part of the country. There was a time people cry, hey, how come almost all the engineers in NEPA come from one region of the country or one particular geographical zone of the country? No, we said, let us start by making every state, 36 states and the federal capital territory, give us 200 young people, male and female. 100 from each state to be sponsored by the federal government of Nigeria, which the president has already approved and released the funds for it. And the other 100 to be sponsored by the state government from which these young people are coming. Which president has ever done anything like that? To build capacity within the power sector. And that is because we need distribution substation operators, cable jointers, linesmen and bolt line bars as well as electrical fitters. We're not going to ask Chinese or Taiwanese or Japanese or Indians to come and do these things for us. These jobs are being created. We want our own sons and daughters to get these jobs. That's why at initial, we are starting with 7,400 people that we want to give skills in the power sector to make sure that they are fully qualified. Then for the NAPSA, we've given, they will be paid a stipend every month until they complete their training. And this training would mostly be hands-on experience in the power sector. Not just theory, but you go there because as they say, monkey see, monkey do. You go and see, you go and do. And at the end of the day, you have a much better perspective of what the power sector is all about. And then we have an outlook for 2015 to 2017, which is the next slide. What the government is planning. And people are saying, you people said you would do 6,000 megawatts. Yes, we have the capacity standing. We now have the gas standing. We are going to do that shortly by the grace of God, within this year. But beyond that, by 2016, we expect to get up to 10,000 megawatts. And by 2017 to 12,500 megawatts. But in reaching this, there are many things happening. Look at all that the president has been trying to do in the past four years. Think of the fact that today, everybody or where most people are complaining, the private sector inherited clientele or customer base that we are more than 50% not having meters. Nigeria has the highest per capita electricity theft in the world. What I'm saying is we have thieves who steal electricity. They may be very well dressed. They may be quote-unquote responsible citizens, but they are thieves because they are not paying their due electricity bills. So we get meters and they will circumvent the meters. That's why we are now doing smart meters. And we're even moving to a place where the meters will be mounted on a pole. So that by the time you get there and if your waist doesn't crack, you might fall down. Because something has got to be done. How come people brag that they don't pay electricity bill? And what happens? What is now giving and is lost is now being distributed among those who pay. Just as they say, everybody is a thief, but not the one with the cash. Now I'm the only or barao or uno she. So it's so painful that people are not paying. So government says because the discos are burdened with all kinds of other things they need to do. This same president is going to launch very shortly and has provided the funding to give over 1 million meters to Nigerians to reduce the gap. And then allow the discos to face the time where they will make sure that all Nigerians eventually are met at. So government is still working, using the Ministry of Power to collaborate with other security agencies to secure oil and gas infrastructure, transmission and distribution infrastructure. We also need a legislation against vandalism of power or oil and gas infrastructure. And I do hope that the incoming National Assembly will have a deal that will stipulate stiff punishment for people who vandalize our infrastructure. The Zungero Hydro Power Plant will give Nigeria 700 megawatts when completed. You can go to Zungero and see how much work already done. Zungero was on the drawing table for over 40 years. Only this president saw it fit, not only to bring it to pass, but to flag it off. And construction is already going on. Mambila, which is in Taraba State, has been in the books for over 50 years. Only this president saw it fit to make sure that all that needs to be done, including securing of the financing for the construction, is taken care of. So that in the next couple of months, Mr. President will also flag off Mambila. And at completion, that will give Nigeria an additional 3,050 megawatts of electricity. Some of you have already seen the Kashimbila Hydro Power Plant being displayed by Ministry of Water Resources because they showed the dam area. But not knowing, not known to many, the turbines are already in place, already in place. So we are ready to generate power from Kashimbila. And the presentation also showed you the other medium scale and small scale hydro plants that we are gradually embarking upon. We're also working very hard to make sure that Operation Light Up Rural Nigeria becomes a national phenomenon. We have shown, we have proven, in fact, day before yesterday was exactly one year, 365 days that we installed solar power at Durumi, Shapé and Waro till today they are still working. We've shown it, it can be done. Every household in these communities has electricity 24 hours a day, seven days in the week, and now 365 days in the year. It's a feat and it's only this government that has done it. And Mr. President, as shown in the present, in the documentary, has given orders that it should be spread to all the other states. So many things have happened, so many things are happening. We now have a renewable energy and energy efficiency policy. And hopefully, and by the grace of God, that will be implemented. And once that happens, it will open the door for the private sector, especially our young entrepreneurs. Because believe it or not, young men can start what we call pyrohydro plants all over the country, less than 1 kilowatt, about 1 kilowatt. Spread it at very minimal cost, sometimes lower than I better pass my neighbor generators. And clean energy. But we need a policy to back this thing up. So that at the end of the day, everyone who is a part of it will benefit substantially. We are working very hard on development of the local content policy. And we are working with some consultants so that the power sector will not be overrun by foreigners. And then we are working on renewed trust of coal to power. Very thankfully, there has been so much synergy between the Honorable Minister of Mines and Steel Development and myself. And we agreed that nobody should be giving license to mine coals if the coal will not be used for power generation. And recently, more coal licenses have been issued to those who have committed that the coal they eventually mine will be used for power generation. And for the first time in a long time in Nigeria, there is so much work going on now for coal exploration. This government has made that possible and we are very happy. Thank you so much. Also, the synergy between the Honorable Minister of Petroleum Resources and myself, that and then the Governor of the Central Bank of Nigeria, eventually Chairman NERD, we met separately in order to make sure that we have a type of balancing within the market because we needed to stabilize the market. The tariffs that the private sector inherited left much to be desired. It was touted to be cost reflective, but it wasn't quite cost reflective. And because of the theft of energy, not enough money was coming into the market to pay the bills. So we now agreed on a system where a loan will be arranged and advanced by the Central Bank of Nigeria to pay those who supply the gas and those who supply the power. And this loan will be paid over several years. So that at the end of the day, there won't be a kind of punitive increase in tariffs that will be difficult for our people to absorb. And in addition to that, we are moving very fast to ensure that renewable energy becomes a significant part of our delivery of electricity to Nigerians. Having said all this, I think it will be difficult for anybody to look at what this government is saying and doing and say that the government is not doing enough for power in Nigeria. This government has done in four years what some governments could not do in eight years or more. This government has brought Nigeria to a place where investors in the power sector are so happy to come and they are coming in their droves. I saw a manifesto that was presented by the opposition to the government. I'm not here to do campaign, but I looked at it and I said, what this manifesto is saying is what we have not only done, but exceeded by far. And in many of the things that were listed in that manifesto, we had over, you know, overcome, taken care of them. And many of them had no solutions. And then the question I asked is this, if my mother goes to the market, buys condiments, buys yam, comes home, pounds yam for me, puts it in the plate, then with all the egusi or gungfer and all the vegetable is preparing the soup. And I know that in a few minutes, the soup will be ready and I will eat pounded yam. And then another woman is calling me, Chinedu, come. I am planning of going to the market to buy food for you to cook. Which mother will I go with? Thank you very much. God bless you.